Hello.
How are you?
Good.
We're really gonna confuse people, Margaret.
Yes.
The guy with the mask is now Margaret.
Yeah, Theo sure looks different as well.
Okay. Special meeting in the council from March 23rd, 2023 is down session, please watch. What allegiance to the flag?
To the flag of the United States.
Here. Lawrence. Ronnie.
Here.
Barbara. Walker. Wallace. As you see here.
Here.
I need an introduction and a second to place the call. Proceed with the call, meaning listen on five. You're on one and our. Although, if you'd ever proceed to five, I say hi.
Hi.
You are opposed. Okay. Well, the good news is you do not have to make a final decision tonight. Okay? So there's not quite that much thought. However, here's where there's still things we need to think about.
Very near future. So I'm gonna hand it over to Peter. Oh, those people, I've never heard of. Who are these people now? Keep an eye out, Michael, just in case we're being hacked.
Sure. Could also be very legitimate people online.
Peter. All right, so first, I want to thank the entire common council and the city of Hudson, all employees that are involved in the project or displaced by the project. Particularly the common council for meetings, special meetings, addressing those urgent questions that come up. Construction projects, as you know, field conditions develop as you're building or renovating. And sometimes it requires approvals. And municipal government, obviously, there's a way to do it. And you've been very accommodating to it. We still have months to go, so I just wanted to thank you now for what's been done today and what may come up in the future. So at Tuesday's meeting, we had some clarifications. There was a request for, now this all relates to the asbestos additional abatement of 400, 500 feet of pipe. There were some questions when I brought this up on Tuesday. About additional pipe in the two, in the locked closet, which they identified and they went through. And there were, there was additional pipe. The revised proposals reflect that additional pipe. The mobilization cost that was raised, the question I brought up, was included in the proposal, the first proposal, as well as these proposals you see tonight. The building needs to be vacated when this work happens, so that was the other question. Can we do this at some other time while the building is occupied upstairs? The answer is no, the building must be vacated when this is done and the abatement contractor has left the building. So that's, that's for now, means, for now, means we don't have to make a decision today to keep him here tomorrow. He is gone, he will return. And the idea here about these two proposals I'm going to discuss is that at some point between now and the completion of the project, while the building remains vacant, the asbestos abatement contractor will return, seal off the area, and it will take approximately five days to do this piece of work. The additional 533 feet now is what we determine.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does that address Tracy's question about the red quarter? That's independent?
Yeah, yes, yes. The concept.
So the two options that you have before you today, and thank you, Michael, for putting those out for everybody. We see the latest afternoon, they worked on it today, we had a meeting this morning with the contractor. There's two options, right? So the first option is a complete abatement, right? Meaning that, you know, all of the material that's on the pipe now, it's asbestos material. It's been used a lot. Let me back up. Asbestos was a great product at some point for insulating, and it was used frequently until they identified it to become a problem, a hazard. When it becomes friable, what does that mean? That means when the fri, when the product is destroyed and it gets airborne, particles of asbestos become airborne and they become a hazard in breathing. So what has happened is, over time, municipalities and others have been removing the product once they identify. This product that we're talking about today is on a heating pipe route and it keeps it warm, right? So there's elbows in it and some of it gets hit, gets damaged, and once it gets hit, it becomes broken and some of it, of the particles could become airborne. So if you're working down there, it's not a good condition. So that's why we look to remove it while we have. And the idea that I'm presenting is, while we have an asbestos abatement project, part of the city hall improvements, why not let's get this done now? Rather than wait and try to do it at a later time when we have to evacuate the building as well. So the first one is the complete abatement, meaning taking all of that pipe off and re-insulating it with a current material that is not asbestos. And the cost to abate it, well, let me get into the next one. The second option would be to wrap the existing pipe, the 500 feet, 533 feet of existing pipe with a material that's approved by regulations to contain the asbestos that's on the pipe. Again, asbestos isn't hazardous until it becomes friable. So what they'll do is they'll remove the elbows and rewrap the entire length, the 533 feet of pipe with another material and encapsulate the entire piece. That saves you cost, the cost you save is the cost of the insulation and re-insulation. So in doing the analysis, the pros and cons, the complete abatement means you don't ever have to worry about asbestos in your building again. It's all gone and re-insulated. The con is it's gonna cost a little bit more money. The pro for the wrap is you don't have to get the insulation reinstalled because they're just gonna wrap the existing. That saves you about $20,000. That's the delta between the one proposal for full removal and not removal. It's the cost of the insulation being installed and the markup sign on that. The pros to that is it saves you $20,000. The con is you still have asbestos in your building in that product. We don't know the useful life of that product, if it gets damaged, when it gets damaged. Got the, you have a pipe leak or something, you have to abate it then, it becomes another, another hazard. The good news is in the both of the proposals, if you look at line number one, I think it is, line number one, the asbestos removal cost is $91 a lineal foot. That's the same for both proposals, and that's the same for the base proposal we had for the scope of work that was originally identified as part of the ADA project. Now, let me just go to say, this work that we're talking about this evening, the 533 additional feet, is not related to the ADA project and does not have to be addressed at all, because it's not to continue the work of the ADA project. It's just something that's there, wanted to bring it to your attention, I felt obligated, and I wanted you to make a decision. So in, in having said that, the two proposals before you, you know, you can think about it, you can ask the question. We have time to schedule it. What I would propose is that you make a decision on one of those choices and then we do a resolution for the next meeting. We issue a letter of intent to perhaps the contractor so they can schedule it sometime before this and the end of the project. But those are your two options before you that I have.
So Peter, I, to address the question, I think you, can I? So this, so how long would the wrapping be good for? There's no sort of guarantees or anything?
There's an idea, I checked that a little bit, you know, there's different theories on it, depending on, you know, it's a damp basement. Someone has said it could be 20 years, it's, it holds up, but I don't have an exact amount of time that it's guaranteed for.
Ronnie has a question, Ronnie?
Yes, thanks for that in-depth and detailed proposal, Peter. Appreciate you doing the legwork for that. My question is, currently, the contractor has left, have they already taken down their encapsulation? Not, not encapsulation, they, you know, how they cordon off the area and all that, have they taken that down already, the setup? I can't hear, I'm, I'm hearing you talk, but I can't make out the words.
It's all gone.
It is gone, okay. Okay. So at, at this point, basically, if we were to vote on either options, they would have to come and reset up, re, you know, put plastic all over, block everything off, and then remove the thing anyways. So the only urgency that we have is the fact that we have, the city employees are no longer in that building. That's the only contingency that would happen if we do it in, sometimes in the future. And whatever costs are associated with that. So if we, as a council, decide not to do this currently, we add on whatever the, you know, the pain and suffering for the, for the city employees plus, I think there is some small cost for the computers to be moved. And that's basically what we are pushing to the future, if we do not do it. I just wanted to clarify that for everybody, I guess, so, you know, if we wanted to discuss that.
The buyer and the city at that point, it'll be a negotiated piece at that point.
What often happens is the buyer will negotiate whatever costs to remove it out of the project. Ask him.
Right, unless, and also the bank and the buyer, right?
Yeah. Is that answered?
Yeah.
Yes, we have three months in front of us. And I really suggest we get other quotes before we proceed with this, because it can vary. This, this gap of 20,000, we can make it with a different quote potentially. So I really feel we should explore that.
I agree with that.
Right, so let me just explain, somebody will have to do that work, right? So to, to rebid or bid, right? Somebody would have to prepare the bid documents. And you don't know, you don't have a guarantee that it's gonna be less when you go up the bid. If you look at this project, for example, originally, it was based, it was estimated at $331,000. That was the lowest estimate to do the minimum work to get ADA compliance. We then, two years later, found that it was $525,000 as an estimate. And we know the actual bids came in at $669, plus two others at $800,000. I had that conversation with the architect and, and we thought it through. And somebody's gonna have to do their work. And that, somebody is probably me, and I already owe Michael and Tom a number of things. It's gonna be a burden on me, I don't mind doing it, you know, I'm a commissioner, I get a stipend. I don't get, I don't get contract consultant.
I'm reminded, you didn't turn this basically.
I have, I have a lot, this doesn't say you don't do it or do it, but just know that this, it's something to consider, but there's also risk. You know, let's say we do it, it costs, you know, a number of weeks, and we put it up to bid, and it comes in higher. You know, what we have here currently is we have a known contractor who knows the building. We have an opportunity to get it done smoothly, we have supervision by VMJR onsite already. To do a bid, we'd have to prepare a document, we'd have to get somebody to maybe do a drawing, we'd have to get somebody to monitor the construction. And I'd be doing all the work to prepare the documents, we'd have to receive the documents review, and somebody would have to monitor the construction. So I'm not sure if the trade-off, if it saves or not. It's certainly something that's always in my mind to do, it looks like it's the right thing to do, I just, you know, I, I, I don't. We can do that if you directly to do that. But, you know, the $20,000 gap isn't really, it's related to material, it's related to product. The cost to do the labor is the same in both instances, it's just adding more material.
Peter, the bidding for this was done by the VMJR, correct?
Right, so, right, so what happens is we issue a contract to VMJR as the general contractor. They employ subcontractors. And Sullivan Contracting is their abatement contractor. They also have a plumber subcontractor, an electrician subcontractor, et cetera. They manage all of that work. They schedule it, they manage it, they monitor it to make sure it's in accordance with his plans and specifications. We committed ourselves, we've done this before, I've done this before for the city of Hudson. It's just gonna be a timeout, I'm not sure if I have that time, given what I owe the city today. But that should not preclude your decision to move one way or another, but I just wanted to put that on the table. Margaret?
Yes, so the general contractor. Have you discussed with him, I'm, it's, I'm sure you have, when they're going, getting subcontractors for work, they're looking for reliability, people that work with before, they're also looking at price. So in terms of what this cost is, the $91 a foot cost for the, for the, in both instances. Can you get, with that going out for bits or whatever, any sense of whether that is pretty middle of the road for the industry? Or is there any way to get at that, either by talking to the general contractor? I mean, he, he would have to know the business of what the rates are like.
We, we sure, we certainly could get that invited.
Yeah, that sounds like that.
I think that, that chart going out, and you know, the other thing, I mean, you wouldn't necessarily, if the, if the general contractor was willing to work with a different abatement company, let's say there was a company that could do it for $75 a foot or whatever. And they were willing to do it, all of these overhead costs would remain the same, the supervision and so forth. But I, I think it would be good to talk to him to see why this, why this company, you know, over.
So, so typically, we wouldn't be involved in that discussion because we hire VMJR to do the project, as specified. They have given us information because we're asking for it. They didn't need to give it to us, but I would expect they are not willing to change out a relationship they have with a contractor that they use on many projects. So we could go out and get some pricing for what it would be a square, a lineal foot. But then in the end, you know, how long do we wait, what do we do with that information? You know, I guess we decide at that point.
Yeah. I still think it's valuable information for staff. And it's fair to just come in to rebid it formally.
And it could also turn out we're getting a, a deal.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, and it also gives us a little bit more information on the value of it.
So, so think about this question, and I'm not saying, I'm just bringing it up because I know my table's full. If I don't do it, who's gonna do that work for you? You'd have to hire a consultant that's gonna be paid a lot more than I get paid. And it's gonna become the cost that you have right here in front of you, perhaps. Just think about it, if not me, who?
I'm confused for doing which.
To do the bid.
But, but also, if we did it directly, we'd still have these costs, we'd have to oversee the contractor doing it. And that contractor would have costs associated with project management and so forth. Those, but those would all be in the.
Absolutely.
So really, the only thing is, is, is $91 a good number? And that's, I'm sure that the general contractor can answer that.
The engineer and general, or the architect and general conversations, Steve Riley basically indicated to me hours ago that it looks like a reasonable number. And the proposal looked reasonable to him. Because they didn't inflate the number, they left it at what it was in the base bid, and the base bid was given to VMJR. So, you know, the question is, does?
I see what you're saying, the original bidding came in at 91, but, and that was in comparison to other bids, so.
And so Sullivan typically give one of their local prime contractors or general contractors a better rate than they may give right in the public.
So that doesn't mean that you can't call up places that you feel like it.
Sorry?
That doesn't mean any, plus can't call up and just see.
Well, I don't think there's any point to that, because I think it, it would require us having sufficient technical knowledge of the project to be able to discover, nobody's going to give you it off the top of their head.
They would have to come every site, look at the project, and they'd have to go through the whole thing, yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that would be a.
And, and that work couldn't, excuse me, that work couldn't happen because if we were to hire our own contractor, just so you know how the process works, it would have to wait until this project is done because they don't want that liability associated. So it would definitely push the project out a couple of weeks in the future.
And that would raise the price. Right. So basically, Peter, the liter, the foot is the same, it's just the amount, the new amount of, of how much needs to be removed.
Right, so, so originally, there was projected 43 feet, ended up being 58 or something, all these numbers are close, right? Just, just in discussion. So that price to do that was 91. We extrapolated that, this price is 91. The difference in here is the fact that we have asbestos pipe that we would like to, or consider removing. The difference between the wrap and this is, the wrap will leave the asbestos in the building and it doesn't have the cost of insulation, re-insulating the pipe. That's the difference. The question is, can you live with having asbestos in your building, wrap, you know? I just leave this to you to make that decision, I bring it to you to tell you.
So what we could do is vote on this at our next informal meeting, with a special meeting in front of us. Does that work with your timeline?
That would be, that would be.
And if you could have the conversation, I know the optics of it was reasonable, but just for people, you know, whose mind, just see if you, if you, you know.
I can do that.
And I'm sure he has good reasons for, and using subcontractors.
So should we have a resolution for either one and then pick it that night, or what is the council here?
I think we should, because I, I would like to have more information on that, that wrap, you know what I mean? In terms of, would that be suitable in terms of staff working down there, you know what I mean? What's the longevity of that?
It feels like, it feels like the wrap is literally kicking the can. Like, we're just making this some other problem, this some other council problem.
Then, then we'll just have one resolution.
It becomes a problem down the road for somebody else at some point.
Whether, whether, you know, Tracy goes down there and knocks the wrap with her head, you know, or has some things, or, or a bite, or, or something.
It's right above your head, right?
Or, like, like, it just, it, it seems like, why are we gonna, are we literally gonna flush 36 grand when we can remove the problem? It doesn't.
It seems very short sighted to walk.
Correct.
Because a leak would, is not.
A leak would be a big problem. Be a big problem.
So, so Peter, just, just so I'm, I'm clear, the new pipe, new pipe insulation is so, so we're basically removing the asbestos and we're removing those associated pipes and then just replacing the pipes, because it's.
Pipe stay.
New pipe insulation on it, out of here, okay. Reading, reading, you're right, literate, right there, that's it. It's like, yeah, this is like if Tracy needed a new desk, grab it back to church. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. We very much, all, thank you.